Here, uh, let's uh, get this boy going, bad boy going here. Let's uh, go with approval of the minutes for uh, April's meetings. I assume everybody's uh, seen those, read those. Any issues, uh, corrections?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, Lisa made a motion to approve the April minutes. Do I hear her second?
I'll second.
Matt seconded the motion. Motion on the floor is Lisa made a motion to approve the April minutes. Uh, Matt made second. All those in favor, raise your hands. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Can we pass that down there to Mr. Bear and then we'll bring it back this way.
Is that what the bird over there?
Yeah, that's right there. Okay. Alright. Uh, there is no old business and new business. Uh, real quickly, uh, I know we got an email from John Bond. I wanna just take a little liberties with the agenda and put him right there real quick. John, if you can just uh, real quick, just summarize what, you know, about bell terror and everything and how we're looking. I know you sent the email out, but uh...
Well, yeah, I've got a paper copy of that for everybody.
We've got it.
Um, really, there's, there's nothing that's, that's a lot different from what you saw last month.
Okay.
The big thing that's not on the sheet that I didn't put on there really because I don't think it's anything you need to worry about. Um, the, the number that I start watching this time of year, particularly when they're down, is, is what they're making during the state fiscal year. Because we did have a year, it was the, the year that they were shut down for a few months where they fell under seventy-five million. And that's uh, that's when they land in a different tax structure in the following fiscal year. And that would radically change this picture uh, for the second half of the year. But, you know, by the time you get to July, you're gonna have the majority of your money collected for the year. So it's only gonna change the picture for what's left to collect.
Okay, after July?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we got two more months.
Yeah, by the, by the end of July, you'll have a pretty good idea of what's gonna, where you're gonna be for the rest of the year.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions? Okay, John, thank you very much. Okay, we'll continue moving this meeting. Uh, on the agenda next is Sandy Autow, Park Board. I hope I pronounced that right.
You did, you did it right up.
What can we do for you, ma'am?
Well, the park, the parkland has parking lot lights that are very expensive lights to operate. So it keeps our electric bill kinda high. And we've been talking about for a few years to put LED lighting. It would be, it's expensive to begin with, but it would save over the years of time and they should last well. And I've, um, this is uh, Jason Gold, and he's given us a quote of forty-seven hundred and fifty-three dollars for that job.
That's four thousand seven hundred and fifty-three?
Four thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. And if you have questions about that, you're free to ask him. He's here to answer any questions you might have. But what I'm asking for is a little extra money. Uh, we have, we still have some money in our donation fund. And if you all can supply twenty-four hundred, that can help us get that job done.
Which park are you talking about, the market?
Sandy, does the electric company help out at all in that?
We've asked them and they don't seem to offer anything here, no.
So these are the lights in the ballpark at Parkland?
They're the lights in the parking lot.
Parking lot?
Just the parking?
Oh, no, the lights in the ballpark would be...
I was gonna say, yeah.
Is, is this R E M C Electric that's on?
It is.
They don't have the same programs like this?
So that, what, the time of the village of Vivi did?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause a lot of times they'll, they'll have, or they'll, they'll come in and do it.
But the park is owned by Duke, right?
No, the park is owned by U S Army for engineers.
But Duke runs out of that, doesn't Duke run out of that?
Well, they make power at the power plant, but, but it's R E M C Electric there.
Sorry, wait a minute, yeah.
Did you say the park was owned by the core engineers? Did we ask them for any help? Don't do that.
They just give us a lay-in.
Okay.
Sorry.
Three years later, you're gonna get nowhere.
Actually, it was a hard time because the county commissioners went in and had the ADA install sidewalks where they were needed to make accessibility. And they said, we did not ask permission for that and we were in trouble with them for a while. We were out of compliance. So we can't, they've already given us permission for this. They said, oh, then they would be fine with the new lights.
Okay.
So your request is twenty-four hundred dollars, your own cover?
Twenty-four hundred and we took care of the rest.
That's where the EDL hunting in the park, the parkland?
We, we even have submitted a grant request to R E M C. They have that program where, if you're a member, they have that roundup. And they sent you on that one before. Because as long as five R E M C three, however, we are going to manage it, so.
Sorry to hear where the money come from.
Jason says...
Go ahead, Jason.
The savings that you'd see on using these lights as opposed to the ones that they're got currently, you'd see immediate, like within fourteen, you know, a year and a half, in pictures of, by the same, the savings. Those are four hundred watts, so these will be for lights right now. What I'm gonna be putting in is hometown LEDs. It's gonna use a fraction of the power.
If the core engineers owns the, the property, do they pay electrically?
No, we lease it from them.
We lease it from them?
We've leased it for, since the early eighties. So it's, it's just a leasing. There's no, they have charges to lease it from them, but, you know, they don't want it, basically. You know, so we've kinda taken it off their hands and they take it.
We, yeah, I'll make a motion to...
I think we should.
Well, I think we should too. I mean, I mean, it's, there's gonna be savings. Safety, that money, not the safety and all that up there too, okay, right?
That's a great, that's a fast payback for...
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we give the twenty-four hundred dollars to help with the lighting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, move along, we're at the thumbs app.
Out of council's way.
Council for money? Okay, so, any more discussion on that, folks? Because we got a motion second on it. So, right now, the motion on the floor was made by Lisa to give twenty-four hundred dollars to the Park Board for the LED EDL lighting. Matt's second motion. All in favor, raise your hands. Opposed? Okay, if that's it, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Okay. Next on the agenda, I have Emily Miller, Skirge Director.
I'm the V M S, started three weeks ago. I'm already coming to you guys for the class. You decide to come now.
You're welcome.
I'm sure you guys are aware that we had that outside internal investigation into our department to see about staffing and what was going on in our department. The key takeaway with that is our payroll. We're not competitive with anyone around us. We can't keep staff because they're just being elsewhere, making four more dollars an hour than they're paying. I also looked at the ordinance. We have five positions for full-time medics, we only need three. So with being able to rearrange what positions in the ordinance and the current pay raises that are proposing, we're only asking for twenty-three thousand more dollars for these new pay raises after we add the new E M Ts and take away two paramedics' slots. The ideal staffing would be one paramedic and two E M Ts per shift. So we would need three full-time paramedics, six full-time E M Ts. That twenty-three thousand dollars that we figured out is worst-case scenario because E M Ts are basic and there's advanced, which would be a pay difference. We went with the uniform that we have six advanced E M Ts, which will never happen, to give us the most it will cost us for these pay raises. So twenty-three thousand is six advanced E M Ts, three full-time paramedics. I don't expect it to be twenty-three thousand. It would be amazing if we had six advanced E M Ts, but that's not gonna happen. But I feel like if we have those pay raises, we're gonna get the staffing because we're hemorrhaging money in overtime right now. We only have two full-time medics on the staff, not including myself. I'm working forty-eight hours on the truck and trying to do the administrative stuff to give them a break. We need more staff and we're not gonna get it at our current pay rate.
Do you, do you have on here how much the rates would be?
I do. On there is our current pay rates and the proposed changes. And that would make us competitive with everyone around us.
So a perfect ship for you is one paramedic and two E M Ts?
Two E M Ts, and it doesn't matter if they're basic or advanced, it could be any combination.
Uh, you don't need a driver on that ship?
Technically, our driver is on a waiver from the state. In the state of Indiana, paramedics are required to have an E M T driver. So if we were ever to get to this ideal staffing where we have two E M Ts, we would do away with drivers on ship. They would still be available for backups because that's allowed in the state of Indiana, just not on your primary truck. We currently have a waiver, we've had a waiver for the past couple of years. They're not gonna continue to extend it for us without us showing that we're trying to fulfill the requirements from the state.
She would have an E M T driving, and an E M T and a paramedic in the back of the vehicle?
So with the three-person crew, all three people would respond in our truck and our chase vehicle. The highest level care that is not needed would return to station and be available for a second run. So if it was a medic run, the medic and one of the E M Ts would go. The second E M T would return back to station for the next run. If it was a basic, the medic would return back to the station and waiting for the next run.
What's different about that than what was before? Can you explain that to me?
Before, she was only trying to staff one truck, just one medic, one E M T, and we didn't even have staffing for that. But our run volume has increased. One day, right, we had five runs at one time. We had every truck out, the medic was in the chase vehicle running from run to run to run, trying to see where he was needed. This three-person system is gonna alleviate some of that stress of trying to find a backup crew and not having to call Madison or Ohio County. It doesn't even have paramedics. So if we're calling Ohio County and we're giving our citizens a lower level of care than if we did provide it here.
So with the, the change of the amount of people that we've already funded, right? We've already funded to, to pay more paramedics, right?
Yes, there's...
So you're gonna down to five to three?
So you're losing two...
So you have two salaries there that's already...
Wrong.
Yeah, but it's already where our budget is.
Yes, but then we would be adding two additional E M Ts, which would be a lower rate than the medic. So even rearranging the line items and then...
You're still twenty-three thousand.
If the pay rate increase would be twenty-three thousand.
Did you got to your uniform staffing?
If we got to the uniform, with the six advanced E M Ts, it will never happen.
Okay, so, so with the twenty-three thousand, that's you staffing the way you want?
That would be a perfect world.
Yeah, so you really have the money right now to change the staffing. But if you went to the perfect world, you'd need twenty-three thousand more.
We would need twenty-three thousand more to make this happen.
Which would then make you competitive within the area.
Yes, and I think it would stop losing employees.
And that's only...
If you had several interests and then your pay rate might go up every year from low again.
Okay. Even with the benefit package and stuff, it doesn't do it.
I'd like to see how this fits in with the whole budget because we had a lot of trouble last year...
We really did.
Trying to get arms around the total. We were worlds apart, I felt like, uh, I'd like to see how this fits in with, with that. Yes, we're, we're coming up on budget season and this is not too far away.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be doing that in August, so...
Yeah, we do, we do that in August. So that's what my, my thought was, is, you know, you need twenty-three thousand, but that puts you in the perfect world.
Right, it's gonna be less...
Everybody already hired and everything.
Yeah.
You get them before August.
Yeah, I should have by July.
July, the party ends during the year. So I don't think, we're not that far away.
We're only a couple of months.
We're struggling.
Your, your issue is you're ninety days away from our next budget meeting. We wanna sit down and talk about budget. How do we cover the, the county right now?
We're gonna continue to hemorrhage overtime. Our two full-time paramedics are tired. They work three and four days, twenty-four-hour shifts a week.
With her changing it, she actually has the money to change it right now.
Do you get it?
We would need that twenty-three additional, yeah.
Because she talks about the overtime, the overtime has been ridiculous. It's taken enough, it's, there's not...
Our overtime is down this right now and it's wearing the staff out.
That would be a salary ordinance change.
That's, I don't, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't...
That would be a salary ordinance change. There's just a little matrix, it's different than...
They are a matrix?
Yeah, they, they've got...
I don't know, well...
There's just like...
I didn't think they'd make that.
It's a different pay scale system that was, it's like the sheriff's department, they kind of set up their own. And that was revised from last year.
Yeah, her fault.
Year before last, yeah, I don't have, I didn't know.
Nobody would watch it.
But it's gonna keep going day two.
Just gets her through the end of the year.
Twenty-three thousand gets you through the rest of this year.
They will give you new staff and, yeah.
Through the rest of the year. And then, and, and the new budget season, which is just around the corner, we will have to change. But this is a sour, this is a ordinance change now. A sour ordinance change.
Paramedics, they're, they're working more than a hundred hours every period.
Insistently, yeah, that's not even healthy.
And I, I, I worry three A M, because they're on a P D H, they're on having a new map losses, but they've been up for forty-eight hours previously.
Yeah. And you think that this salary increase is gonna...
It is, it is very competitive. We're not gonna match K D H because they've got more than stacking and they've got money they don't care about. We're not gonna match them. But all the other county departments that are around us that are set up someone, I mean, we are gonna be very competitive.
Do you have people in mind?
I have several people in mind, but again, they're waiting to see what happens with that. Because making a one county over makes three or four dollars more happen.
Yeah, all the increases is...
That's, that's why we're gonna have to prove, and the twenty-three thousand.
Gail will have to change that ordinance for the salaries.
And just, just for future reference, when you put something like this together, we send it immediately? Because I mean, this is a pretty big surprise coming across the desk today.
Yeah. It's good, it's...
I don't like surprises.
She'll email to, so we got time to...
Just as soon as you get the information, please.
Reason it out.
How long have you been on board, Emily?
This is my third week. And we're getting ready for a state audit tomorrow, so I've been trying to get the building and our jobs up to standard before that audit.
This isn't the time to play. I think we all need to hear about everything that's going on down there. But if you're three weeks into it, can you just tell us, tell us what the three most important things are going on at S E R right now?
Compliance, we were out of compliance with the state. Did a full audit of every single truck. There's a state mandated list of equipment that's required for the state, and we aren't in compliance on three of our five trucks.
Do we have fines coming to us on that?
No, because the audits tomorrow, they're all fixed as of this evening. Everything is done. We were cleaning offices, we found narcotics, we found medications just stored in random cardboard boxes. I've got expired narcotics that I can't find in my narcotics log to even go back. So now I'm gonna have to go searching through all these records to find out where these medications came from. Like dispose of them, they're just... Every time you open up a cabinet, it's overflowing with paperwork that's not filed and then they shake more fashion.
So is it fair to say if we hire these people, that we're gonna have a director that is eyeballing exactly what's going on in the building? Instead of being out on the road and not knowing what's going on in the building?
Because the last record was, I'm sure you guys are aware, she was almost three hundred run sheets behind and charting. The last time I lived, which was two days ago, we got the nineteen. I've got them all caught up, I've got the staff working on their old run sheets. And all nineteen outstanding are from the last record.
Hell, just, just...
Thank you. Everybody is rallying around. We have a town hall meeting, I have twenty people in attendance show up and talk about what they wanna do with the department or they wanna see it in the future. I have two work details the last couple of days to get stuff ready and I have people showing up though. We just ordered pizza and we worked through the night.
Is our insurance company aware of these, of these issues? Yes.
Can I, can I, can I just...
Go ahead.
Um, the first thing I wanna say is Emily's doing a heck of a job.
I'm glad to have her.
Obviously, as you're well aware, she's been on board three weeks. The proposal that she's made to you today is news to me. This is the first time I've heard it. Thing that she's mentioned about the narcotics is news to me, it's the first time I've heard it. I will tell you that we're already in the process of self-reporting for other violations to the state. So these will be included, uh, in that self-reporting to the state. So, um, I think my only point is, obviously, Emily's not completely familiar with the process. So, uh, we're all very convinced with the fact that we've gotta do something relative to salaries in order to retain and attract and retain people, there's no question. But I think possibly we're a little bit ahead of the, we got the horse, car a little bit ahead of the horse because there's probably other things we need to come and ask for as well. The need is probably not as urgent as the resources as far as people. So we definitely need to address it. But a lot of why you're here today, I would tell you, this is the first time I've heard it, heard it as well.
So what do you recommend to you?
I recommend if you would like to make a decision relative to the, to the labor you do. So my opinion is very similar to yours. I think with money there collectively, and the money is already there collectively. But the salaries would be, be different, therefore, it wouldn't be improvised the salary ordinance, if that makes sense to you. Because you've got more people already in the ordinance than what we have staff. So the majority of that money is there to get us through until we can come to you with that, that formal request or proposal. We still have outside consultants that have to give us a final recommendation either. And certainly, we want to take into consideration their proposals and findings as well. So I don't know how that process would work, because I don't know if we're allowed to pay people more if there's already a set amount or position in the ordinance.
Salary, salary ordinance has to be changed.
The position itself is gonna be renamed most likely, right? Because you're going from the different, what originally was, you're gonna change it up, right?
Wasn't.
Like, you're not gonna have, I don't know... Right, but she's not gonna have as many E M Ts on the salary ordinance, you're going down.
Plus medics, plus paramedics, yeah.
Less medics, more E M Ts.
Do you have an advanced E M T on every ship?
Uh, no, but we have, so we're currently going through the advanced blocks. And they should be done in August. We've got two in paramedic class, a lot of them are new employees. But they don't graduate until December and it's a very long time.
So, SER reports to the commissioners. And I understand, we didn't know, but I appreciate, I, I do appreciate you being here. Three weeks, that's a lot, so you've got a lot on the table. Um, I, I can't tell you, I'd be only guessing what the fines would be if we were found to have drugs laying around. I'm sure that, that's been fixed. But how about if we authorize the commissioners, because they report to it? We go ahead and do a motion to approve this on the basis that the commissioners are going to come back with a final financial on everything. But that allows you to get her out of that truck and start hiring these people.
I, I think it's very good news.
Not some idea, but the rest of you get a vote up.
So what we're basically doing is changing the salary ordinance for those three positions. And knowing that it's gonna cost an extra twenty-three thousand dollars, which is, we spend nine... I don't have nine, or... You said, sent that monthly report out to everybody at the beginning of the month. What does it show what they have left in their budget?
We don't, we don't know anything. Nobody here has their budget.
I think you asked a question.
How many positions are you getting ready to change? We don't have any.
Jamie, did you just ask a question, I was saying, is twenty-three thousand dollars yearly or is that the rest of it?
It's annualized, so there's only, uh, eight, seven months left, so whatever that would be, uh...
Gotcha.
You say twenty-four divided by twelve is two, not seven, fourteen thousand for the balance of this year. Does that make sense?
Seventeen thousand for the balance of the year?
If you took twenty-four thousand, which you asked for, and it's annualized, that's two thousand a month. There's seven months left in the year here, so that's fourteen thousand dollars.
And that's also if you probably hired him tomorrow too. I mean, it's gonna take a little while to get somebody in here too.
Yeah, but we have to, okay, the salary ordinance change, the salary...
You factored in not only salary but benefits on this? You did?
Our benefits are...
No, I'm saying the positions that you're gonna eliminate, you factored, you factored their...
We've never had five full-time paramedics, so I don't even know how that even got here.
You're gonna redate all of them, it'd be changed.
The most they've ever had in full-time before.
It's gonna be the, they have, it's gonna be the basic, it's gonna be considered the driver. You know, when you go through and you regain the ordinance and you've got all these people listed for them, you're gonna have to, she's gonna have to tell me, okay, this is the salary for the, who's, what's left? Because, did you get to look at the budget that Yvette sent you at the beginning of the month? Did you look at it? And did you, on the paramedics and the E M Ts, see how low they're getting because of the overtime? So I mean, that, is that what you're basing your twenty-three thousand on what's left or?
No.
No, you're just going by the salary ordinance at the beginning of the year?
Just the salary ordinance.
So see, there's, I'm telling you, it's gonna, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying it's already gonna be short, not even count the twenty-three thousand because of the overtime that's being...
So we're gonna be more in debt?
Yeah.
Continue to pay the overtime?
I would like, I mean, I understand why you wanna do something tonight, but if you can let Yvette and I look at it tomorrow, look at the ordinance, see what, this is what we have budgeted, this is what we have left. Where are we gonna get the rest of the money?
The overtime currently does not offset all of the positions that were in the original salary order. I can guarantee you that.
No, it does not. So, I mean, there is a line item that is four, there's like fifteen thousand in it for overtime, but it's not, it's not being...
We're not taking anything with that.
And I don't know why that's, just how the payroll is...
The overtime line should be underfunded, I would agree with that. But if it's likely to take the total allocation for labor for twenty, twenty-three, the overtime does not offset all of those allocations. That are not mandatory.
All, all the money, the funding for this comes out of casino revenue too. That's where the money for, uh, the funding for...
Half of the funding is...
The C E R.
They get half of it comes from casino. The other half is their billing.
Which also be longer than...
Yeah, yeah, and our casino revenue is down for the year, so that's why we're on there. I don't know, you do whatever you want, I guess, but... I, I would rather fund this and cut some other things out of casino revenue funding, personally.
Yeah, that's important.
Because it's much more important than some of the other things that we give money to out of casino revenue. So when are you gonna approve tonight to give her the money or to change the positions? You have to change the ordinance, the salary ordinance. Change the salary ordinance to what?
This is gonna take some work, I don't think we'd do anything tonight.
It's a lot, it's a lot going on here.
Yes.
So Gail, what you, what you asked was, you wanna have time that you and your bad...
If we could get the salary ordinance, what was approved for last year?
Okay.
What is left?
Okay.
And then where, you know, he with Emily and who are gonna, how we're gonna adjust this? Because we can't, we don't even know what the salary ordinance we're gonna change it to.
Yeah.
A little bit more specific.
How long do you think that's gonna take you?
We're gonna do it tomorrow morning. You've got payroll finished, so we can do it tomorrow morning.
And then you're gonna take it to the commissioners first because...
Their meeting's Monday.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we should wait a full month. If you guys have that kind of information, what would that take, a special meeting, a call?
Yeah.
I mean, twenty-four, twenty-four hour, fully hour.
She can't begin hiring at the higher rates without it being done.
Right, so I, I, I'm, I'm trying to get time for them to, commissioners to look at it and come to us with an agreement.
Do we wanna...
It looks like, I don't think we should wait until, if they can pull all that together and they can agree on it, then I think a special meeting needs to be held for our next council.
Do we wanna do it, have the commissioners meeting next week?
You need forty more hours for it then.
That's, that's, we got forty-eight hours from now, next Monday.
Go ahead, post the joint meeting.
That way?
Yeah, we got, I mean, we got forty-eight hours if you wanna do it before the commissioners meeting or after or...
Yeah, this, this is Wednesday.
I don't wanna do it after.
Can we dig into the, can we, can we dig into the information first? Look at budgets, ask questions, do all that, and then send a meeting once we're all?
All the same thing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, let, let them sit down with, excuse me, with the commissioners, make sure that they're in agreement, and then go from there with questions, I guess. If, how long do you want to take for questions answered? Because I, I absolutely understand where you're coming from, and I'm, I'm for the safety element all the way around, not only to mention the risk to the, the county for something legal to go on, that's bigger than anything. I mean, it's just important, it's saving lives, but the next step is we get busted for doing something that is unethical, and I'm not saying, and I know you're here to fix our problems, welcome. I, I think we owe you as fast as, as we can with a better understanding of what's going on here.
Yeah, yeah, there's fifteen thousand overtime and none of it's.
Yeah, and none of it's been allocated, I mean, that's why, I don't know, but that's just how their payroll is being done.
Okay.
You're going to get an answer soon.
Thank you, commissioners' meeting is fifteenth then, right?
Monday.
You can get that stuff to them, have them take a look at it.
So I need to make a motion to table this until we have more information?
Yeah, I, we will table it, but I think we need to decide too, whether we're going to have the special meeting to get this done.
We need to decide right now?
Decide.
Should we, should we go ahead, because we want to, as far as when we want to do the next special meeting? Lance, how long do you want to say that, you know, when, when the commissioners come back to us, how many days do we have to review this before a special meeting? Because I think your, everybody's eyes should be on this as quick as possible.
Yeah, I agree, it's super important, I agree.
I mean, I like to do it sometime, maybe pour it in next week or something like that. What do you all think? I mean, that's.
Say when?
I mean, I'd be good with that. I think maybe next Thursday or something like that? Next Thursday at five-ish, six?
Won't we let?
Please, the commissioners, get on.
Can we let them do their thing and?
They are, they are, she's going to do their job. Gail said they can be done tomorrow.
We can do it tomorrow.
And they can be, they can have the.
Set in stone tomorrow.
Get it to the commissioners, they can look at it.
Set in stone tomorrow, do you need, you think you'll need more than just tomorrow, or?
We will be on it tomorrow.
I have a feeling.
Which would give the commissioners three days to do it. They can get it after the commissioners, and then, and then we, three days later, come in Thursday, and, and then we do what we got to do real quick. So, so that's, that's what I'm going to do, we're going to table this issue right now, okay?
Not even in here, so.
Okay, go ahead and make a motion. We're going to table it, and then let's go ahead and, and you take care of that on your end, as far as that, please?
I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay, and then go ahead and post the.
Special meeting.
Special meeting for council.
On the evening?
On the, yes, let's say the Thursday, we can have it at the courthouse.
What time?
Uh five o'clock, guys. Next Thursday, five o'clock?
Five P M. next Thursday.
Next Thursday at five, next Thursday at five, please.
Next Thursday at five, the evening's important.
Okay. Thursday. We all forget to post that, or we can't do this. You can't do that now?
You won't.
No, track section.
Okay.
How about we just wait and see?
Let's, let's change it, let's change it to Wednesday.
Wednesday, can you make a Wednesday?
No. We've got recycling district meeting. Tuesday, I've got board section meeting, or section, sorry, meeting.
I mean, Lance.
We got to do it next week, I mean, I, I.
That's fine, you guys have a torment, no problem.
Yeah, we don't.
I was just looking, I wouldn't make.
He's letting us know he can't make it, that doesn't mean.
I was just trying to get everybody here, so.
Yeah.
Let's just leave it on the evening.
Yes, stick Thursday, yes, please. Special meeting, okay. All right, guys, we got that.
Emily, talk over tomorrow morning, talk to Yvette and I.
I'm probably staying on it.
That's right.
Yeah.
So we'll get the ordinance to you, we'll get the ordinance to you, and then we'll meet with her Friday morning?
Yeah.
And then we can, like, the positions, as far as naming the positions. All right?
All right.
That's a plan.
I mean, as long as the commissioners are stamping this before we get it, that's fine with me.
That's a plan, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sure we saw it before, special meeting Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
You've got something else in your second paragraph here, about your captain and your result?
That is just like secondary, so.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Just one to the.
All right, we need this meeting moving along. We do have a presentation, an A D P presentation, but before we hear from Mr. B., I'd like to hear from Leanne on, just as H R director, just your thoughts on this, okay? And kind of explain what's getting really happening here, so.
I got something put together for us. Why are we talking about this? We're talking about streamlining systems, but why? What's our purpose? To cohesively work together in order to best serve those that serve by providing tools that meet their needs, whenever, wherever. What are EMTs and supply car on Saturday? I want them to be able to upload their pay slips to Carbonner or wherever, not wait on Yvette to come in the courthouse when it opens Monday and get some green paper. Employee empowerment emphasizes the importance of giving employees the autonomy, resources, and support they need to act, that's great for sure. And I believe in empowering our employees and taking care of our people. What's our primary goal? The implementation of a single data management system that provides streamlined sets of services across the multi-unit workforce to best serve those that serve. We got our government, we got our taxpayers, our employees, our funders, our managers, we have all the moving parts out here. Let's tie it together to better serve those that do serve. What are my five primary objectives? Accurate time of data, accurate time of attendance data collection, using one integrated system to ensure payroll accuracy and data storage. H R I S functions, so our employees can access their pay slips, their W two's, control the changes they need to make. They need to upload a marriage certificate and change their benefits, they can do that themselves without waiting on the courthouse to open. Put their time off requests in, see how much accrued time they have. It also gives us the tools to perform cost analysis and capture our data metrics and develop accurate reporting capability. We can forecast those overtime needs and our salary ordinance, we can get accurate forecasted data based on good data in a streamlined system. Benefits administration using one integrated system to benefit, to measure benefit use threshold. Are our benefits serving our people? Are our people even using our benefits? And billing accuracy. Are we being billed to people who don't even work for us anymore? That'll be eye-telling in a little bit. A streamlined, audible system that provides managers with real-time labor costs and state staffing data so they can support their decision-making. If Emily needs to say, hey, you're out of overtime, but you have it picked up for me, she can pull up her manager dashboard and be able to see that, accurately forecast her labor costs. And in summary, efficiencies and improvements will come from proactive streamlining and evolving how we operate as an entity. The results of these improvements will serve as a commitment to excellence, which internal and external shareholders, our employees and our taxpayers, expect and deserve. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to turn it over to A D P.
I've got, I've got.
Oh, I'm sorry, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm throwing curveballs, that's what I'm doing, just hang on, guys. Yvette, you're currently a payroll, right?
Yes.
I mean, what kind of issues are you having down there? I mean, just, I mean, uh, just issues, problems, aside?
It's just, you know, like it's pretty antipoid with the system that we use. Um, it's time-consuming, it's, um, I think the payroll, it's outdated, you know, that we're not collecting any, any kind of information that we need to, to help us. The reporting, you know, is, is tough to come up with numbers on, you know, good numbers. Just, it's just across the board, I mean.
You have issues getting like time reports and all that from?
No, the time reports are okay, but I mean, you know, they're, you know, they're pretty much stamped and come through, you know, every two weeks, and I don't have any, I'm not collecting any time off data, so all that information is not in the computer system, it's on the stage, just so people know.
So you're not collecting any time off data? Who does that department?
I'm putting it into the computer system, we're collecting it on paper.
There's not a system.
The managers, yeah, we're not collecting, you know, someone's vacation time, we're not collecting, you know, personal time off, sick days off, it's all on a piece of paper.
It's not being tracked.
Yeah, you've got to open a printer and, you know, like that keeps track of there.
So if we wanted to report of it, you would have to write it out first?
We'd have to get it from each, each department head. And so, um, you know, it takes.
Okay, it went five years, okay?
Three days to do payroll. It's, you know, I have, Monday I collect the information, I get all my vouchers, I get the timesheets, and then I pull vouchers for all the departments, and then, you know, fill in the, the blanks, um, dates, run numbers, all that stuff that the, you know, the state requires to be stamped and signed and all this stuff. Then I make sure all the numbers are correct, even though it's on an Excel spreadsheet, I still have to make sure all the addition is correct. So it takes me about three days, a good day to get all that.
And then.
You get time sheets?
Yeah.
Does any of this involve time clock?
I'm sorry.
Does any of this involve a time clock?
Yes, it does.
A digital system?
So what, I mean, I'm not sure he's going to cover that with us, but I'm, I'm guessing it's the digital system where you log in.
So everybody's going to be responsible for their own time, so whoever, every employee is going to be clocking in, and if they want two weeks, you know, in two weeks they want a couple of days off, they, they request it, um, you know, whereas now, I don't necessarily see that information, I don't see necessarily everybody's time sheets, I see a few, but all of the department head keeps that information in their office, then they give me the time voucher that I enter in, so all that information, so, you know, but. For the first quarter, it took me, it took me the first quarter to update all that information, because in our payroll system, you can't just say, hey, everybody got a six percent rate, let's put it in there, you know, you can't do that. I had to manually go through every employee, a hundred and fifty employees and change. Then on account numbers, um, the fund, you know, the account numbers that, that they're, you know, like EMS, you know, they use different account numbers, so I have to make sure those are all correct, all, there was lots of different changes, all that had to be updated, so it took me a whole quarter to, to update all that information. So, and then.
Insurance.
Then we're looking at insurance, right? So now I'm trying to audit the insurance, and yes, there were several people that were still on the insurance that we were paying for, that even though I had asked them to remove the names.
Three times.
They still, you know, I'm looking at it and I'm like.
Were they using the insurance?
I'm sorry?
I know we were paying for it, but were those individuals using the insurance?
No.
So we're going to get that money back?
From the insurance company?
Uh, yeah. So, and, you know, also, not to mention that, that there was, I can't remember the exact specific insurance or whatever, but I know that this one particular person who was, um, her last day was December very first, um, and I happened, you know, happened to come through, so, um, there was a, the Medbin, you know, they always send us all this information about fees and, you know, expenses going out to the different doctors' offices, hospitals, et cetera, and so I did happen to get in touch with that company and say, this person is, you know, terminated as a twelve thirty one, or employment is no longer. So luckily we didn't run over on, on that employee, so, you know, just things like that, there's just all these little moving parts, there's, you know, not, not only do I have Medbin, but there's standard insurance for dental and vision, and then there's, um, you know.
Your hands are full.
Lots and lots of different portals to go into, websites, and, you know, it's just very, very time-consuming, but it just often takes time, and then all of a sudden payroll comes back around. And it's another, you know, three-day process to get it started, putting the information in, I just, you know, I just finished where I came over here, so, and I still have paperwork, I have to, um, take all of the, um, direct deposit slips, those pretty green pieces of paper, and then I have to transpose all those numbers onto my pay vouchers for my warrant numbers.
That's mean to stay in age, those green pieces of paper ridiculous.
Yeah. And we did talk to, um. Well, the green paper was left over from the clerk's office when they had to have stuff.
Well, I just, the information is manually put on that green newspaper at the efforts of the time.
Yeah, that's like I'm saying, I found it. So we talked to, um, a lady from Knox County, Leah, um, she's the payroll director down there, and so we were able to talk to her about her implementation of the new payroll software, you know, even though they're a lot bigger county, she loves it and it works well for them, so.
All right.
So currently, employees of the county right now don't have any access to a portal that they can go to to access any benefits?
As far as their insurance or their employment?
Uh, I mean, basically like, uh, for instance, a portal where you can go see different links built into it, where you can go see your insurance or your, uh, maybe your some kind of retirement or?
You can log into each one of those, your Medbin or your, you have each, each individual login.
But I lose this green piece of paper today.
Oh, you're.
And tomorrow, I, my, my wife decides she wants to buy whoever's side of the truck, Leanne.
You have to go get it from.
I have to.
I gotta wait till this Monday, yeah, it's Friday, I gotta wait till Monday to come in and get a duplicate copy.
Yeah.
All right.
And not to mention, the W two's, the ten ninety fives. Um, yeah, those were. Those were, you know, I, we happened to have a snowstorm on January the thirty-first, the ice storm that was between here and Missouri. And Harris, who does our ten ninety nines.
W six.
W, well, W two's too, well, yeah, ten ninety nine, that was.
That was our problem.
But, you know, the guy that does it, uh, because we, you know, have done it the same way we've done it in the last few years, so this guy was, ran from Missouri, he got iced in, and I called him and I said, are you going to make it to the post office? You know, because state stamped it, and he goes, I don't know. So next thing you know, we did get a fine for late ten ninety nines, ten ninety five, whatever it called, and anyway, so I called him up and I said, hey, did you make it to the post office? And he said, yeah. So he emailed me the stamp confirmation and, you know, everything, the whole mailing label, and I was able to send that to the I R S, and they forgave us the twenty-five hundred dollar penalty.
Okay.
But that in itself, I mean, you know.
Sounds like her, so.
It's just like.
So they all come down to the date stamp.
It came down to that little green label from the U S Postal Service that says this.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Uh, just Gail, anything from you on this?
No.
Okay, you're good?
I mean, what she said.
Okay, all right.
She did it when.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, uh, Mr. Dean?
Yeah?
Floor's yours, so.
Well, thank you very much. Um, first of all, I greatly appreciate, I know you're a part of the time out of your day to listen to a couple guys when we will drive up and, uh, and share with you some of the different things that, uh, we, how we work with organizations, and just to introduce myself, so I've been with A D P about sixteen years now, had a little bit of different hairline And just to introduce myself, so I've been with ADP about sixteen years now, had a little bit of different hairline when I started with ADP. Uh, but, uh, I work with organizations that specifically have a hundred to a thousand employees. So most of them fit in a hundred, uh, let's just say four hundred re- region, there's just more of them. But whether that be municipalities, nonprofits, manufacturers, um, all sorts of, uh, with them. The things that I focus, or I should say, before I was working for ADP, I was on automotive consulting world. And the only reason I bring that up is I got to understand a little bit of what it means to be an employer. Uh, because I had some human resources responsibilities, some operations responsibilities. And some days felt like firefighter, no pun intended, with municipalities, or whatever the hottest project was, got thrown on my lap. But it, it helped me appreciate some of the challenges that have been shared, uh, today, budgetary challenges, um, risk, uh, compliance risk challenges and different things, um, and from that standpoint. So, uh, that's a little bit about me, I'm accompanied by, uh, my director leader, Yvonne Rywicz, and then Jen Poland, who will be, uh, going over the technology itself. Can you hear us, Jen?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Perfect. Uh, we'll, we'll get to you in just a minute, but thank you for that, uh, and Jen's gonna be the actual demonstration of the technology itself. But as we go through, um, I have a, a couple of slides that I wanna go through and it was, it was valuable actually for me to hear some of the things that you were working on today. Couple of things I'd, I'd like to keep, for you to keep in the back of your mind, and that, one is employee empowerment, uh, which Leanne explores, so the different ways that that's gonna occur. Two is administrative control. Uh, particularly around your two largest expenses, your labor and benefits, and the ability to forecast, uh, be able to see real time information, uh, so that you can make those strategic decisions in a more instantaneous way, because you have all the data at your fingertips. So as you go, to go through this, uh, keep those two things in mind. Does that sound fair?
Yes.
Perfect. So for my agenda, I'm gonna start off with what's at stake, and what's at stake typically comes up with organization is your finances and your risk. And so we're gonna spend a little bit of time on that, and then I'm gonna share, uh, with you some ways that ADP is uniquely positioned to support you. And then we'll just close out with the proposal. Does that sound, what, does that meet expectations? Okay. So what's at stake for you? So I thank Leanne and Yvette for, uh, pulling a lot of data, uh, for us beforehand, so we could have a kind of understanding of your all's world. But as we understand it, there's basically spent nearly four million dollars, uh, in labor spend, uh, today. So obviously a big chunk of your budget, uh, as it stands. And the American Payroll Institute estimates, in an environment where you're dealing with paper and, uh, different, uh, items that you are today, there's up to, you know, around an eight percent error rate when you do that. What do you think about just one percent? Of four million dollars? That's a big chunk of change, uh, that can, um, help maybe be offset in other ways. Another big expense, uh, obviously for the county is your benefit spend. And this just represents, so that two million four hundred thousand just represents your health insurance, obviously you have dental and you have other things as well, but still a large chunk of change. Unfortunately, as much, uh, as we pay health insurance organizations, they're the, they're not the most accurate entity as well, and it was articulated a minute, a little earlier, where what they, they estimate, they, what they bill is seven to twelve percent in error rate, uh, what they do that. So we, I hear horror stories all the time when I meet more clients where they've had somebody that they've termed appropriately, um, of an organization, and they show up three months later on insurance bill, it wasn't caught, they stay on it, there's a limited amount of time that you have to recoup those funds, and then it's lost, water under the bridge. And so having tight controls on that, uh, is particularly important. Turnover, you're not unique, you know, Switzerland County's not unique, a lot of folks are struggling with turnover these days because wages keep going up, um, other industries that used to not be competitors are competitors now because of all the fluidity, uh, that's going on. And so, um, about the estimated cost when you lose somebody, um, that the supervisor was about forty four thousand. So when you talk about the recruitment efforts, the training efforts, um, and everything before they're up to full speed, typically about forty four thousand dollars. And then, uh, we were, uh, the data that they give us is you have about a ten percent turnover rate as an organizational one. Any questions on this?
So you're saying, if I were, you're saying the American Payroll Institute is telling you it's an eight percent error ratio when payroll is done individually?
When payroll is done manually.
Manual. And three point nine million is our salary out.
Which we're paid a day and a night.
Yes.
So we're talking, we could have an error ratio in dollars of three hundred and twelve thousand dollars?
Three hundred and twelve to three hundred and seventeen depending, yes.
And that encompasses a couple of different areas, so it could be around, um, miscalculation on the time entered. So if people are manually capturing their time, or the times, the, the start time's accurate, the end time's accurate, along with of course, any sort of being, it's not just errors of keying, but it's also accuracy upon, I mean, like a garbage in, garbage out situation. And then there's unintentional and intentional times that, that can occur in a manual environment. And so there's a lot of variability, so when you count all those variabilities up, that's about an eight percent.
I just found our paramedics. Yeah.
Similar factor with the insurance, uh, from there, from the different areas and, uh, so we'll, we'll dive into that. So when you talk about, uh, what's at stake for you, just coming back to that nearly four million dollar rate, we don't estimate, you know, after some conversations with you all, that you are at an eight percent. We, we want to take very conservative numbers, we know you have very detailed folks that work here, but detailed folks can't even, or can't necessarily help if it's a garbage in, garbage out situation, you know, if they're not receiving the appropriate, uh, data, and we're all human. Um, you know, the human factor comes into play. So what we estimated, um, conservatively is, let's just say you're at four percent in the error rate. And we move you to one percent, that savings a hundred and seventeen thousand, I know who knows. Small, I mean, it's a small percentage point, but it's a large dollar, a large impact. And I have copies of all this that I'll be leaving with each one of you as well. We talk about health insurance spend, and we're gonna show you in action how we capture all this and how we're gonna be able to, uh, sense this up in just a minute. But when you talk about, um, the health insurance point, you know, we didn't say that you were at the max, uh, at that end as well. I'll get the seven to twelve, we put you at the four as well, if you, you have, you know, decent controls from income, but there's a human factor to that. But if we move you to two percent, that's forty eight grand back in the budget. And then it was very interesting to hear the discussion in regards to the paramedic. Ways or ways, they're important, I, I'm not trying to beat around the bush about that at all. But there's different things that, uh, we're gonna show you today that are gonna give you more retention capability than you have now. A lot about, a lot of it's gonna be around, um, glorifying and having the employee understand what they're receiving beyond their paycheck. And they can see it three hundred and sixty five days a year, and not just a statement, if they get one time a year saying, here's your total benefit package. So when they're thinking about going down the street for twenty five cents, a dollar, whatever the case may be, for another job, they can take a step back and go, well, that might not be the wisest decision if you include my benefit package there. So if we approve that by one employee, that's forty thousand, three ninety two back in the budget. And then there's current, there's hard costs that you're paying for today. Uh, so the payroll module, uh, within Switzerland is about seventy, eight hundred manually. The, um, ten ninety five C service that you all receive today is about thirty five hundred dollars. Um, so for eleven thousand three hundred, those are the systems, uh, that you're paying for today that could potentially go away if ADP was. Harris is not going anywhere, just a federal module within Harris. There's, we are not an ERP or an accounting software, we eat it, but we don't, we don't, that's not our sweet spot, we stick to our, we stay in our lane. And so when you look at the, um, potential total estimated savings, when you add all of that up, you're looking at almost a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Conservative, like, we, we did not go to the high points, we went to the low ones. Any questions on this? I'm excited to dive into the technology with Jen, the acoustics may be a little different, so excuse me if I have to relay the question. Uh, uh, if you all have any questions, but, um, we're excited to dive into the technology and please let us know if you want us to pump the brakes a little bit at all during the presentation. Sound good? All right, Jen, we have you on the screen. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, super. I just, you're playing through, I just wanted to make sure you all can see.
We can.
Super. All right, guys, so I'm gonna be taking you through a demo of Workforce Now. And the first thing about today is Workforce gives you a really holistic view of how this is gonna work together. Um, so we'll take thirty five levels today, just to really get a feel for how the whole system. But if you have questions, definitely pray your prayers, John, communicate those to me and I'm happy to answer those throughout the demo. All right, so I've just shared my introduction to Workforce Now that you can see here on the screen. And as John mentioned, Workforce Now is true single digit, so really everything you're doing, uh, so the proof it can retire and can be done here in one place. But the next thing about Workforce Now is you can also see what you want to do there in the system. Now, what you see on the screen here, this is an example of what a portal page could look like for employee self-service. So you can customize this guy, what's your self-service, self-service items are available here right on the screen. So you can see how these agents or employees come in and get pay statements. Uh, we'll talk about clocking in and out in just a bit, but you could add a time point, you could add a time off request here to the portal. But they also have some really helpful links here, so as an HR professional, like, we get a lot of questions about, hey, what happens if I change my task for holding? What's that gonna be for my paycheck? So employees can come right in here, you can do, um, pay calculator or task for holding calculator, that's all self-service there. But it's also gonna point out anything that needs to be done, so if you have pushback tasks to them, or a manager has a time off request to approve, they'll be able to see those right on their dashboard as well. So you can customize what's available here on the dashboard, you can even do custom work, so if you like to have or recognize a belief, you know, the employee's month, or you have upcoming dates that you would like to communicate, uh, you can do that right here on the portal page as well. And the employee also has this My Self-Tap here, that's where all the self-service items lie. So you'll put the most important ones there on the portal page, you can analyze, of course, that pay statement is always for most important employees. But they can come right here to the My Self-Tap and they can navigate with them as well, so very simple. Now, most employees will probably use the ADP mobile app or load their self-service. So really everything they are doing sitting down at a computer, they can do in the mobile app as well. And what's nice is it communicates with the portal, so it gets used to patterns that the employee has and it makes recommendations through machine learning. So what I mean by that is if the employee uses mobile to clock in and out, and the system gets used to them using mobile to clock in and out as they're making, it makes that recommendation to them from the center. So when the employee comes into the mobile app, they can easily just clock in and out right there in mobile. We're gonna talk more about time attendance later, but just wanted to point that page out. If it's paid, they'll have their pay statement from the center, so they don't have to go looking for it. So all of that, it would be available for them there. You can also send all of your news and announcements to the mobile app. And they'll have that same to news it or task link right here in the mobile app, so this is exactly the same as it is in the portal. So if they need to sign a new policy, or if they need to approve a time off request, that would be visible there and they can actually take action from here as well. Now, all of these additional menu items, you will have control over what employees can see and use here. So I heard John mentioned earlier, um, benefits involvement, they can actually involve benefit rates through mobile. If they're a doctor, they can pull all their, um, benefits information, we'll talk more about that in a bit. Of course, clocking in and out, which we already addressed. Things like write, pay statements, um, but not only getting pay statements, but they can update their W two, or their W four, their direct autonomous, and get their W two tiered up. So all of that can be done through mobile and that's really right, capable. So that really doesn't make a paper, um, you're not having to repeat that information in medical or to people that's all coming directly from the mobile app there. You know, there are items here that are also really popular, um, requesting time off through the mobile app. Um, that's really popular for employees, so they would like to do that through the mobile app. And one thing that's unique to ADP that we hope to leave with as a vendor is called intelligent self-service. So what's great about this is instead of calling you when they have questions, they can actually come right into the mall and they can type the question in the chat. So they don't know how to put in a time off request here in the mobile app. When they type in the chat, the system walks them through exactly how to do it. So basically does it where they're gonna ask them what type of time off they would like to take, what's the date and the time they would like to take off. But really walks them through that entire process, does everything look super clear, and they can just approve it, and it will automatically send that to their supervisor, makes the done look good. Uh, if they're looking for, they can write pay statements to W two, that's all they have to type in the chat, they can put the link right there in the chat. So the more they use the system, um, the more the system learns about the employee and can really, um, be more helpful again of our systems as well.
Any questions?
There.
Yeah, any questions regarding the portal itself? So essentially, I know one thing was mentioned that you may have access to different apps or to your different providers. What this does is it brings everything into one bucket. It makes it very simple for the employee to be able to see all the information that you choose to share with them for, from a self-service standpoint. W twos, pay statements, open enrollment, schedules, whatever the case may be, whatever you choose to share with them. You're gonna see later how that empowers, uh, from an administrative level, because now you have benefit information, dollars, wages, labor, all in one bucket for reporting purposes. And can very instantly walk in on one of these board meetings and show you data from an analytic perspective right away. Where are your times at that point in time? So just a couple of things to think about. So the first thing is the employee empowerment. Go ahead, Jen.
All right. So let's talk about the employee's perception of the system and that's the means of the onboarding process. Now, you know, today they're using a paper packet, and when you're ready to, uh, really utilize this electronic piece, it can streamline everything because everything's going directly to the system and into the people. They can have a lot of different onboarding experiences, the employees can come in and take a huff and welcome them to the chair. And a lot of these steps here are optional, so you can decide which ones you want the employee to complete. But they can see something like awesome videos here, so they're really trying to build culture and retention, my cool video. They might see their supervisor or manager going to be here. And then of course completing all of that typical required takeover. So they can complete that by now electronically, e-verified, and all the things right here in the system that you're using. They'll fill up their task for holding and direct to talk to form, again, they'll just go right into the role. So nobody wants to keep that information or send that to the payroll. And then they can find all of your company policies, your company handbook, that can all be done electronically as well. Now, a couple of that options here, if you have any documents you would like them to upload, you can have, uh, customized lists for different dealer positions, they can do that there. Uh, you can even have billable forms, so you can prep documents where you can do the completing, you can add those here. And it's probably one of the biggest advantages here too, is they can do all of this in mobile. So if employees feel more comfortable using a mobile app, right, don't have a computer, they can actually do this here in the mobile app. Now, this last step I would like to include, uh, they can work in for the area a little bit around their location, and they probably know the area pretty well already. Uh, but it just makes them feel really excited and, and I'll kind of feel that step that you've added to their onboarding path. Any questions? Please, we're gonna make some adjustments in a moment.
We're ready to talk about the benefits.
All right, super. So the next step we need to do for employees are that available to enroll here. Uh, what's next, once you've entered the conversation, they can enroll either using a computer or through the mobile app, it's the same exact experience. And what will determine that is what season project, and Workforce is built out of all of your benefits plans, all the rules, all the health building. So the employee gets a notification when it comes to people who benefit. Those come to you across the office and the chairs, and if the employee wants to be set on the left-hand side, so they can manage all of their dependents and benefits here within the system. We've got decision support built into the tool, so with the. We've got decision support built into the tool, so what's amazing about this is for employees who maybe they never had benefits before, they have no idea what to choose, or maybe they've got an health condition this year, so they need to evaluate different plans, they can actually walk through the questionnaire and get a recommendation. And it's very simple for the employees, they'll come in, they'll need all of the different plans to offer. They can come in and make their elections here, they can compare plans side by side, they can look at the local details. They'll always see that composite check across the top as they're making their elections. But the best part here is all of this goes in the table with the proper effective date and deduction amount. So there's no manual key of deductions in the table, all of that is happening seamlessly. And then this will also communicate to your peers, so hires, terminations, changes, those will communicate to your peers as well. So no more trying to keep up with all of those changes, I know that's a pretty tedious process.
Hey Jen, I know you're not a DJ, but can I make a request?
Sure.
One question I do wanna show in benefits is can you briefly show the total compensation statement that the employees can see? And then can we dive straight into time, please?
Oh yeah, that's up in there. That's the total compensation statement, it's available to all employees. We've all been told reports to statements, but this is where the employee can not only see all of their earnings but they can also see all of the details behind what you paid for the benefits as well. So they'll scroll down here and this includes anything you want in this, so it'll automatically look for the system and what's in the tool, but if you add additional benefits, so if you have food credits or something ancillary, you're welcome to add those to the total compensation statement. Any retirement benefits will be included here as well, and this can be done with it. So if you want to take down a employee or a pension meeting, you're able to do that, but they will have access to this total compensation statement through self-service.
And this just shows, hey, this is what Switzerland invests in you. We know you see your paycheck, we know you understand your benefits. Here's what we pay for our employee benefits too, this is how we do invest in you every day, every week, every payday.
And there's free form fields too, for example, and I'm not saying this is relevant for you all, but for example, some organizations provide uniforms. Not all of them do that, some organizations make it pay for your uniform, we do. If that's a benefit, you can add, so if there are some things that are unique to the county, those can be added to the benefit and not necessarily be some of the areas we know to keep, like the health insurance and things of that nature. Perfect Jen, let's dive into time.
Okay, now in the part of time dependence, a lot of different time correction options we have here. We've got the clocking in app option here, the computer, so employees can do that. They can also utilize the mobile app, got a quick screenshot here of those options. So the web time, which we just pointed out, mobile here. They also have a keyoff option with the hours of vacation provision. So just know a lot of different options that you can utilize that might work better for different job groups. So you can have a combination of these things, whatever works best for your team.
And it is difficult to have a combination for a municipality, because you have very different types of employees. You have people who report to a desk every day and you have people that report to a clock to begin the day. So we can accommodate whatever is best fit for your folks.
Being able to clock in by a mobile app.
Now, here's a manager, one of the employees.
Hold on one second Jen, I'm sorry, we had a question.
No, it's okay, it's just.
Well, the mobile app, you don't have to utilize that, but what can happen with the mobile app and some people do it is where it has geo-fencing. You know, I have to be within the spectrum of the clock in, it's not like I'm still sitting half all over my bed waiting for a clock in.
So we have the highway guys who've told to report up to their site to work at 1:29. They're coming to the barn.
It works well as long as that's the regular spot, if it's constantly moving, that's more work for the administrative team. But if there's a regular place that they report to, it certainly can be set up with geo-fencing.
There's also some option where you don't have to make it all or none, so each individual can be in a different group. I can clock anywhere, someone else can clock within a certain location. And then the manager can also clock in their crew at a particular time. And there's another way for an employee to know that, hey, I shouldn't have clocked in at this point, but I missed it, he can get on the edge of the room.
So we can flex for you, whatever you need. And having that selection doesn't increase costs or anything like that.
I think we decided on, and will be in the proposal.
Hey Jen?
Alright. Now, moving into the manager's seat, so employees are clocking in and out there of this system, they can have a dashboard where they can see everything in regards to time and attendance. Now, the first place that's always going to come is to the things to do area. What's great about this is this shows us exactly what needs to be corrected, what needs to be reviewed, what needs to be approved, so they don't have to move this thing through the whole time card here. But for example, if an employee has a mismatch, the manager can see that right here and make that correction if they want to. If they still have time cards to approve, they can do that here as well. So it makes it very streamlined for that manager. This is also in real time, so they are able to see who's working right now, coming in later. They can look at hours for the weekend as well, and it will even project overtime. So if you do have a day of leave or comp, that's able to be that. They can also see who's scheduled to be off this week, so this will give them a quick first idea of anyone that has that scheduled time off. So that's all available for the managers as well. Now, they can't easily come in and view individual time cards. So if they would like to come in and review the time card, they can easily scroll through their team here, using the little arrow here in the top right-hand corner. So as soon as the time card's off, that's what you'll do, what that looks like. But this is where managers will be able to come in, they can make corrections here, adjustments to the time card as well. Oh, this one doesn't have a T E D name that's right here. But this allows you to see all of their hours, the bit of work. But one thing I wanted to point out, you also have the opportunity to do labor allocation by the hour in the time card. So you'll have this uncut two columns here called location and department. You can have as many columns there as you would like, and you can name it, anything you want as well. So if you wanted to track the fund, the department, the project, the task, you're able to actually track that by the hour in the time card. So I just wanted to let you know that is available, and we're doing that on paper today, but that can be entered there in the time card.
I think that would be a useful tool for Kenny Highway, specifically Carla, because she has to track specific jobs, specific funds, so forget which fund pays for what type of labor, what type of roadwork. I think that'd be a very useful tool for her, but today that's all done manually.
And John, I can't hear, so.
It was more of a comment than a question, so you're free to go Jen.
Okay, super. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the time off. Time off can also be perfected here in the portal page or through the mobile app. So employees can come in and meet the different types of time offs that apply to them. You can have lots of different approval policies for different job groups that you want to. But very simple for employees to do the time off request. They can come right into a calendar page, they can choose the date that they wanna take off, and then all they have to do is complete that request form. As I mentioned, they can do this through mobile as well, but what's nice here, we can also build in a lot of rules. So if you have rules on what that takes for a difficult, you have power to these rules, maybe you have a limit on how many employees can be off, or maybe you do not allow them to go into the negative vacation balance. All those types of things will build in to be part of it. So it would not unless be a request that they offer, providing one of those rules. Now, they can also have access to a game calendar, you can see up here in the top right corner. But the manager can also sync all of the time off of their local calendar as well. So they can add it for the new Gmail, and actually sync that with your local calendar, being able to see those get off.
What's a key thing with employee morale, particularly around vacation, is when an employee thinks they have time and they don't. And what we find is sometimes in the facial process, there can be a disconnect, either the information hasn't been calculated yet, manager isn't aware, this way everybody's on the same page at all times.
And if I'm not mistaken from just having experience with this system, this is audible too. Manager approves the time off, that record is just always there. The time off is automatically deducted from the approval bucket, so they always have a correct and up-to-date balance, which can be reported out. And it's just, it's real-time data.
Yeah, and a great point about audible, so any movement in the system, whether it be by an employee or administrator or manager, is dated time stamp. So you can see when any kind of change was made and who made it.
And by who made it.
Okay Jen, that here?
Okay. Alright, so when you come into payroll, John, is that effective?
Does that work? Payroll's great, yes.
Okay, so let's talk about writing the table. Now, when you come in for a table, this is your table dashboard. This is where you can not only see recently completed tables, but it's also going to show you the due date of your current tables as well. Now, with this trend here, we're gonna come first to this things to do area. This allows me to have visibility to things that might need to be cleaned up or updated before I run the table. So any missing data for employees, any additional payments, something like retro pay, it'll automatically calculate that in the system for you. Any payments still in the circle, any remaining time and attendance errors, so if there are still some inquiries out there, you can see those before you go into that table. Now, your worksheet will populate automatically when you start that new table process. So what it's going to do is bring in all of your details of time and attendance. And what I'll point out here, this is just an example of a worksheet. So yours, if you want to be customized, for you, might have different columns. So what's going to be the most important page here is that they're able to bring in all of that labor allocation. So you'll notice time everything, we've looked at three times here, you've got three different cost numbers assigned in. So that cost number will recollect all of that labor allocation that you did from that paper sheet that's being entered. So we can capture all of that information. It gives you the opportunity to assign a particular number of hours to any cost number that you like. You can make adjustments here in worksheet as well. Any there are any really changes, those can be implemented here in worksheet. And an additional column, you'll be able to see like vacation, you can have focus, you can have written work, but it's probably anything that you wanted to add there in your worksheet that's been customized for you. Now, once everything was good in your worksheet, you're gonna come in and that time is calculated here. So we just come up here, this place is going to calculate tables in seconds and for to show you some of all of the summary data. So you'll notice here a scroll, and you can see hours, earnings, tax deductions, so all of that details there. I can also compare to any previous pay cycle, so if I wanna choose zero for here or less than here to this period, I can see those compared side by side. But what will be most important for you are all of these reports you can run here on the right-hand side in for the final rest table. So for example, that labor distribution register, that is probably the most important thing, so you can go in, maybe look at your different funds or departments and be able to see how much people was assigned there. All of that details there, including a complete table register. And this gives you the opportunity to come up and make changes if necessary. They'll define something that needs to be updated, you can come in and make those changes and just rerun these previous reports. And once everything was good, at that point, you're just gonna come in and print the table. I'll pause there for any questions?
Any questions on the payroll itself? One of the things I'd like to point out about payroll is right now, all the risk for payroll relies or is on the county. When payroll is, when you partner with ADP, the risk shifts to ADP. So the tax filing, making sure that they're done on time, making sure they're done as appropriate, and also even things like wage garnishments. So for example, you get a notification from whatever particular entity comes in, there's a rank file on how much you can take out of somebody's check, there's a rank file if they have multiple garnishments, who gets first dibs, essentially all that, that responsibility is on ADPs, not yours anymore. The only responsibility from a garnishment perspective is just last note, when you get the documentation and input at one time. So until, we take care of it until it's extinguished. So there's a shift of risk too, so there's a, and I'll leave it up to you all on what you value risk for having less risk on the organization.
So you guys are the ones that will put the data in?
No, the data will come from you all, as far as, are you talking about the garnishment or?
No, like salaries or the pay rates, I'd say.
Pay rates come from you all, because that's not our business to determine, you're all pay rates from that standpoint. But from the payment side, from the tax side, that would come from us. So the direct deposits going in, all those different factors.
If we change somebody's salary one night.
We would have to adjust it. Did you guys do all the payroll taxes?
We would handle all of payroll.
Even the 941s?
Even the fine 941s.
You handle all, and you're willing, if somebody's questioning Gail as the auditor, you're right there with her explaining what their questions are.
Yeah, and we'll get into it from a service perspective, but one part of the service with this is you'll have a dedicated account manager assigned to the county, to Switzerland County. So it's payroll day, I've forgotten how to work something, or I have a question on compliance, you know, on this particular area that you'll be able to call in to, so many know by first name basis, it will become an extension of your team. It's gonna be a lot smarter than me.
And I just wanted to point out, in the 949, 41, it's back to the whole, your table reporting here in your dashboard, you can come in, all of your tax reports, all your final table reports, all of those are there. And then after tables been processed, we'll also provide this G L interface file that can be imported back into your account software. So that will all be now to your specification by the G L specialist.
Jennifer, if we're looking at this and because we're a government body, this body specifically council looks at funding and budgetary. If we were to request information by department of what that specific department salaries are without names, without anything?
You were teeing this up.
I can run that quickly for you.
You'll have access, and actually, maybe a great time to jump into, did you have anything else Jen you need to show in the payroll?
No.
Maybe this would be a good time to either show some of that analytics, where we can show whether you wanna see turnover by department, waste by department, you know, any number of different things you'd be able to pull that information at your finger fingers. And if you forget how to do it, it's very user-friendly, but if you forget how to do it, we'll walk you through it. Dedicated account manager.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, this is data in preparation for a meeting like tonight. Like can easily be, you know, prepped and ready for you, like headcount, hires, just coming in, who's going out. And some of that up-to-date detail, year-to-date wages in certain departments, all very easy to get to, so it's not taking a ton of time to prepare information that's related.
So you could potentially have custom dashboards for council and information.
Can you have all different dashboards?
Well, you can have, I would imagine that probably each individual that's an administrator would have a different dashboard, because it's more, it's not, things are gonna be critical to different roles.
Sure, that's understood. The only thing that necessarily you would limit it to is your security rights. So we're gonna set up those security rights based on what you tell us, on whose eyes can see what. And it goes from there, so there are limitations and there are limitations that you direct us on.
And this is how to point here, so you can build that deep dashboard. And you can build up dashboards that are most important to you, so dashboards in regards to labor management, obviously a lot of H R related dashboards, higher termination, headcount tables. So you're asking about salary, you can be able to look at average earnings, but then you can dive into all of this information, those are end wage lines. So if you wanted to look at any particular department, job, project, by time period, they give you the options, so those. it gives you the options, and those are all of this information. So you can really look at this any way that you want here, because then it's export all of the data behind it. So it's pretty powerful, um, being able to have point back to the data, but also how back to the data visually.
So I know earlier, there was a discussion on, uh, particular jobs, you know, that were done. So when you think about, you know, what, we have something similar that's coming up, you can look historically back at how, how much it cost, or you know, how many hours were needed in order to do that, to forecast for the next budget year. So the more data that has, the more power it becomes for you.
And John, I'll let you leave, if there's anything else you want to do to touch on, do I do them?
The specifics, does that hit?
Who has the authority on, when I'm looking at this as a department head, and I go in and I start changing my employee's information, does, does our payroll department hear about, do, do we, how do, how do you verify that?
That's a great point. So we set up workflows. So if it's approval workflows, so for example, I'll even start at the employee level. If you want, like, an employee changes their address, or makes a, it's a request that has to go through a workflow before it becomes permanent, uh, from there. Um, there, there's also security rights doing so. For example, if I'm, if I'm a, a team lead, and Vaughn's not on my team, I'm not going to have access to even touch his hours, or his punches, or even review them, unless I'm bringing it, it's like a backup, if, if the manager's out. So between security, workflows, uh, which we get that input from you, we're able to accomplish that. Does that make sense?
It does. So, from a, from a human resources standpoint, does all of this qualify for anything that has to go into an employee jacket? If it's electronic, do we, do we get away from all that?
Yes, absolutely, we can. I have used ADP in various forums where all, she was talking about the electronic onboarding. It's all right there, it's stored within ADP. We can go as administrators to that person's profile and print the documents if we ever need to for an audit. But absolutely, it's stored in their ADP profile.
So they, you would have an electronic.
It is completely separate from Brian's, which checks that box for us as well.
So let me just, I know that, and Jennifer, I apologize, because this isn't the payroll piece, but it is a fraction of what you just talked about. You had a piece out there that said we can make an announcement, okay? So let's say that federal government comes in with new FMLA standards. And our HR tells audit, hey, we need everybody to make sure they sign in, sign that they recognize the new standards for FMLA by the federal government. Does, does that, would that qualify for us notifying all employees?
Absolutely, and they would electronically sign it, and it's stored right there in their profile.
And you don't have to sit through paper to see who's signed and who's not. And then if you run a report and see who hasn't signed, you can reach out to their supervisor and have the, hey, knucklehead, go ahead and sign your.
They need to log into their portal and sign this by the end of the day. Or better yet, I'll come with my laptop, because if technology's a problem, here, I'm just going to help you log in and do it. We're going to get compliant right now as a group.
Maybe, uh, just touching on the, uh, the survey tool, Jen, do you mind touching on that?
Yes, yeah.
Another way to communicate to your employees and gather good information.
Yes, so here, when we're going down, you can deploy pre-prefigured surveys, so you don't even have to build them. Uh, but what's nice is you've got surveys in regards to onboarding, the N B A, exit surveys, even employee engagement surveys. So you can see here how these are all pre-prefigured. And also here on the left-hand side, this is where it actually gives you an option to add or edit questions. You can select a very specific audience, if you want that question to go to a given. What's nice though is you can also create custom surveys, you can see here at the bottom. So if you have something specific or a question you want to ask out to your team, you can create any sort of custom survey you'd like as well. So those can be unfolding to any specific audience, uh, that you would like. And then you also have the option to, that does broadcast messages through the system. You can have hopeful freedom templates, maybe like to do welcome messages or birthday wishes. Or maybe there's a weather alert, which is really common as well. Uh, so you can create those items right here through the system. Once again, selected the audience, so maybe not everyone needs to get that message, but it can be a specific job group, and then scheduling that broadcast in a way that you'd like.
And if I'm not mistaken, John, part of the ADP onboarding process and collecting those electronic documents, we have the option of having our background checks integrated with ADP, or uploading those into ADP to provide that electronic storage as well. So we don't have confidential pieces of paper floating around. It's right there securely stored with ADP, and the liability is on ADP, not Switzerland County. Am I correct?
You, you, we do offer a screening and selection service, and that can be integrated into the system. Absolutely. Yeah, there's, uh, you know, part of the, the reason why we, we met, we wanted to meet you for, we did the demonstration, is we wanted to understand what the needs are. We have lots of solutions that we haven't recommended. Um, they can be waived dues, or you grow insurance, or you never use it. We don't want to add solutions with you that aren't going to be impactful to the organization or want. But I, I guess what I'm getting at is you're not going to have early waiting.
So your video, I want to just go back to your video. We do a video, of course, on Medden, our, our health insurance. And we're going to offer a new benefit. Instead of calling all the employees, we can throw a video onto that screen that everybody can watch at their, at their leisure, when they want to, as long as it's done by an X date, we'd know that that was happening. Now, I see your question.
So there's an area within policy acknowledgements. So as a policy acknowledgement, we can push out and say, hey, watch this video acknowledges policy? Yes. There's a whole different learning capability around videos and testing and things. That makes sure that we're not discussing today, but policy acknowledgements, yes. And then oftentimes, there's a video, so sort of a video that you saw was during the onboarding process. And, and sometimes it's just like a wall of video, but policy.
And I'm asking employees, we have married couples out there, and one wants to ask any other, maybe they're comparing benefits, what I should sign up with in my company versus what you sign up with in your company. If we had that opportunity, if they're sitting down, they're seeing this for themselves, and they can send a message into human resources, audit, maybe payroll, what, what's going on with this, how do we do this in the future?
You, you also have the option for employees to utilize, uh, what's called decision support. And it knows just that, it, it asks me a bunch of questions about my family, my benefit history, and what my preferences are, and they will recommend a benefit plan. So the future is you evaluate your benefits and see who's taking what, what the usage is. And you offer different plans, and some may be a lower cost to you as an employer. Um, but very, very likely, perhaps a lower cost to the employee as well. They can direct them toward the plan that's most appropriate for them.
The other thing that we can do with this is we take the philosophy, we want to help the people that help you. So if you choose to, you could give limited access from your, from your benefit over to do things like pull their own census information, see participation levels in different, uh, plans, so that they're, uh, more proactive approach to help you versus waiting for documentation from the team in order to make those, um, recommendations.
It's, it's super easy to use. I have ADP pulled up. ADP follows the employee. So if they leave Switzerland County and go to another company who uses ADP, their information follows them. I can pull up all of my pay statements from two thousand and eighteen until current. It's just all right here. My W two's all right here.
So you can just set up a, or they lose all their rights to the Switzerland County portal, except for W two's pay statements. And that way, they're not bugging payroll, or, churned employees aren't bugging payroll, they can pull their own information.
There, there's also, when she pulled up that voice of employee, there's a broadcast message as well. And, and you can do that to notify employees of the report events, or weather events, or, you know, some really critical information, or even, um, they can go check the portal again.
Sure.
For that update on it from all there. Uh, so it gives you a lot of tools to communicate, and loads right in that app.
I imagine some of you as representatives have got portals of some sort, probably other, uh, roles or organizations. Uh, and some things that make ADP different from your competition is all of this resides in a single database. So it's one bucket, it's not multiple systems trying to talk to one another from there. It's all in one bucket, so there's only one place for an address. There's only one place for, you know, a paid piece. So you don't have to worry about, oh, there's been an upgrade of this software, but not this software, and they're not communicating it. It's all ours. And if there's a question, there's only one figure to point to. Anything else?
Uh-huh.
Can I let Jen go? Jen, thank you so much. I think we're good from there. Uh, what I do, I'm just gonna, thank you so much. Sorry if I just, so, uh, I have a copy of the PowerPoint that we went over earlier, as, as well as the official quote that's included. But I'll just, um, just, you need to look at, I know you, you all have a lot of leisure out here. It sounds like pretty busy people.
You never said it.
Never. Nobody speaks that way.
Does it happen?
It does. It's in the, uh. Yep, and there's, I can go, you want me to go over it?
Yeah, so we call them, get the cost right down in the savings.
Sure. I will, uh, go back over, so maybe if we start on, uh, it's on the left-hand side of the forward, the one that's got the three icons, or the four icons. This is actually the cost of the service itself.
It's not in my page.
Shame on me. Um, so we take, yeah, I know there was a comment earlier saying Knox County has this service as well, and they're a lot bigger than you. But you're not paying, you're getting the same technology for less, because it's based on the number of employees you have.
Okay.
So it's always scalable. So, uh, sometimes people are seasonal, you know, they have some seasonal folks. A lot of times with municipality, summertime, it jumps up a little bit. You can see a little increase with that in place. Wintertime, maybe it goes down some, so does your invoice, because it's constantly following you is where your employee count is. So, all the way. Yes, absolutely. And active headcount, to be a key. And active is defined as I was paid one, at least one time in the month. So what I'm getting at, you could store all kinds of, uh, employee data. Um, but it's like, you have a part-time person, or somebody takes, uh, you know, leaves and comes back.
They're on at FMLA, they're marked as on leave at FMLA. We're not getting these, your paycheck, we're not writing.
That's probably more helpful. See, that's why I bring them around.
That's it?
So, uh, the employee count, obviously, it's the left. Uh, there is a one-time setup fee of the eight thousand six fifty-five. Uh, that's where there's an implementation that comes, uh, goes through. That implementation process takes roughly about sixteen weeks, you know, to get everything up and running, uh, from there. It's led by a project manager. Um, I'm very grateful with ADP from, uh, our industry is heavily hit by the pandemic. We, a lot of folks have a lot of turnover. We didn't, um, because ADP spent a lot of, uh, money retaining folks, spending money on wages, on key personnel that help our clients, uh, to make sure you have that. So the average person that leads that project manager team has about eighteen years' experience. Experience matters when you're dealing with an organization, you're dealing with a level of detail with this. And they bring on the experts, and they help with the training, and get you scheduled from all that that goes from there. So that's what encompasses that eight thousand six fifty about. The, uh, thirty-eight thousand nine eighty-eight is the reoccurring fees that occur, and I'm going to get into the detail of it here in a minute, that, uh, that count across the, over the year. And then ADP corporate, uh, occasionally rolls out, um, incentives, because there's a lot of folks that are evaluating, because they're having, you know, they're wanting more budgetary insight right now. And so what they offer is four months free of service. It's two months for, uh, for each year. Uh, for your first two years, in month seven, uh, seven and eight, I believe, month seven and eight, you would be receiving bills from ADP for those. So a lot, one way to look at it, so that six thousand one sixty-nine would come off of the thirty-eight thousand for the first two years. Does that make sense?
Okay, so it's not added to after the first two years, it comes off the first two years.
It comes, right, you just, it would, it would come off those first two years. It, it doesn't go to forty-five.
Okay.
It's thirty-eight. Good question, though, that, that's a good clarification there. But the thirty-eight thousand, just to be clear, the thirty-eight, well, the thirty-nine thousand would be your bill moving pool after the first two years. What if there wasn't? I'm sorry? What if there wasn't any use? So we're like any other business, when we do price agreements, so, because a lot of times folks want to see forecasting further out, so if there's a cost of doing this, it increases. I've seen them anywhere from zero to three percent with ADP. But we can do a price agreement and put it in front of you, or maybe it's an example of zero, zero, two percent, three percent, or something like that over. And I think we do them up to five years, so you can spell it out. So you'll know exactly to the penny, what it would be.
And for instance, in one of our prior C E O last earnings calls, he referenced inflation, the rate of inflation today. We were not using that as an excuse to raise our rates, the match inflation. It's, it's going to be our cost of business for a day.
Historically, what have you been doing?
Yeah, I'd say, I'm like, you know, it's not every year, but some years it's two percent, three percent. It's typically in that range.
So we signed a five-year contract, we are locked in for that cost, or you have the ability to throw that increase in there?
No, with the price agreement, it, it, it spells out, you know, year one, year two, year three, you have three percent, one percent, two percent, whatever.
Okay.
And those are offered either three or five years, whatever.
Uh, you know, and also, you're not locked in, this is not contractually locked in, you're not working with us. Uh, we don't force you for any time period, or about an agreement rates.
That's good.
Uh, so this is kind of, this is the, uh, how we get to the numbers. So from a per payroll, uh, perspective, at a hundred and fifty-three employees, there's a, every time you process payroll, there's a seventy-two dollar base fee, and then it's a dollar seventy-three per check. That rounds out to the three thirty-six bi-weekly, and then you get your annual number from there, the eight thousand seven fifty-three ninety-four. Now, that delivery fee, I've been talking to Lea Anna from that. You can probably, it sounds like, because I believe you're a hundred percent correct, Father, if I understood that correctly, you would not be paying that five hundred and twenty dollars, because you have your reports available online, and there'd be no need for pay steps, because it'll have an electronic, uh, bill. So you can essentially take that five twenty off. We have to postpone here in case there's, you need to, for whatever reason, we have to make it delivered to you, you go all requested. So that's just clarity and transparency first. Everything else is on a monthly basis. So when you look at the, um, the H C M solution, so the H R and benefits area, it's about, for a hun, for, excuse me, for a hundred and fifty-three employees, it's eight twenty-one per employee per month. So it's not every process, not every payroll processing, it's once a month. And then that rounds out to the monthly and the annual figure. That includes the health and welfare care, care connections, which we have incorporated and enrolled for. So for example, when the H R team, uh, gets, because unfortunately, employees are fluid, because they're constantly changing, they move, they have pay changes, they have different things, they may be changing some benefits. We're electronically pushing that information out to those four providers. Medden, Guardian, Allstate.
Same. Right, so when a manager hits the terminate button, the Cobra notice goes out, ADP talks to all the carriers and says, in these benefits on this day.
Gail, is this an extra? Go ahead.
They get the benefits until the end of the month.
Then on that day, in those benefits.
It's based on your policies. And we'll roll that into the system.
Does the Medden, just use, I'll use Medden. Do we get charged back from them for changing any, I mean, this seems like, from a technology standpoint, quicker path, but do they have it in their contracts that we, we can't change certain things, or the way that we offer our information to them? Have we checked with them?
The Medden? No.
So like when?
But maybe with Harris?
Yeah, okay, here.
That's our company that we use right now. We have already paid the, annually, we've already paid for this year, right? You've got that here.
Yeah.
We paid them thirty thousand eight seventy-five forty-four. And then the payroll side of it is like seventy-eight hundred.
So we're not replacing Harris in general, we're not replacing Harris.
But I understand the question, you're asking if there's any sort of discount from Medden, or, or Medden.
Or enough charge, because they look at it.
As far as Harris, if we stop service first of July or whenever, I can't answer that right off the bat, because I'm not, we didn't get an answer from them.
What was the annual cost for the payroll part?
Um, it's seventy-eight forty-one oh four, but there's also this my benefits. Um, it's seventy-eight forty-one oh four, but there's also this My Benefits that is thirty-five hundred. And that's so that she can log on or I can log on and do our thing. Some of the core, we keep track of all the employees.
That's eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-four. So we wouldn't be paying that anymore basically with this?
We would not be, right.
Yeah, our, our invoicing doesn't begin for any of it until we begin service of those. And we project that to probably be at this point.
But I don't, I can't answer Harris, it's gonna give us a refund or...
You are a C E O.
Now, you could set, I mean, so you don't, so you can lie with that.
So we've been asked a lot.
So if we did, so we did set that certain performance.
So this is based on that.
Yes, sir. Is that what it costs to change if we had, had no, or go down? If, or go down, it, it all looks like, so if the part of invoicing change on this would be the dollar seventy-three, you're not gonna get it, would, for another check, so you'd have more checks, that would be another dollar seventy-three.
The rate's all the way down under here.
Yeah, and then, uh, well, you wouldn't receive the base fee and I guess we're gonna say for having an additional check. But you would see like the eight twenty-one, if I had, um, an additional employee, you'd see that one again.
So just to chime in where Mike's going with that, so from a budgetary, again, going back to council. We want, there was a department head that didn't replace an individual for a period of four months. Couldn't find him, decided not to replace him, see if they could manage without that. We could ask for reports on a quarterly basis showing what their salary savings or overage was, without the names of the individuals, of course. But it is, because you're telling him, it's gonna go up and down. If I wanted that by department, could you support that?
I, I think there may be two different things going on. So, one is our invoicing will be based upon your actual number of paid employees per week, per month, whatever. Um, uh, what you're referring to is, um, I guess in stored salary for someone who's not here, you could not have that. So when someone terminates, you could look at someone who is terminated and say, "This person is terminated. Here's her salary." Project that out, but it wouldn't, it does attract budget. So your budget would be kept inside Harris.
Right.
Your budget is...
So is Yvonne? So that order, the reason I ask that question is you had that organization piece up there earlier that nobody really touched on. And so I was just trying to see if that, if that follows back in, strictly from a budgetary, that would be...
Yeah, great question. And, uh, look, what our situation does in these, your work disposition is.
Okay.
The stores, employees not...
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
Good question, but like, if, if we wanted to opt out, that would be, uh, touch my, maybe just came up. Is that an option?
It's, it's in the quote. You don't have to have the, look at the slide measure on the screen. No figure scan, but I won't tell you the, what that does for you is, we see it unfortunately more often than not, is eliminate buddy punching. It's pay, it's have a time for ours. Run late, clock me in, you know, uh, from that standpoint. They, if they punch it, with the buddy punching, get those little fingers in and then...
Make sure they're clocking them.
So, when you talk about that first figure, that eight percent controlling your manual processes and eliminating the risk and all that, that's an example, or, or a few others.
You're also gonna try to convince a hundred and fifty-three people in southeastern Indiana that we're not giving their finger, their fingers, the CIA. You gotta keep that in mind, too. I mean, where we're at.
No, I understand. There's, there's always culture change.
I have swag in college. That's what I got.
And this, this cost, do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I...
Use your eyes and understand, it's not a problem because the G offenses, you know, like where we are.
As long as it's set up, and again, if it's a regular place, then do it. Otherwise, it's gonna be administrative work. They're constantly having to set up, you know, multiple spots.
And now the government's got your location. They got it. I said, "Now the government's got your location."
You guys already have the thing, yeah.
Yeah.
You're so...
You're walking along all the time.
I'm just making fun of people. I can't last.
Amazon knows what I'm talking about. I'll take that.
Yeah. Oh, I dare you to peek because it'll pop up on here right here shortly. Two of your competitors are getting ready to pop up on my... Yeah, I was thinking on Facebook, gonna come up with a, uh, a diemaxic thing.
I was gonna, Sharon, we didn't, we didn't really talk about this, but occasionally, um, when you're hiring folks, you might hire folks that are unmakeable for whatever reason or things like that. At no cost to the employer, you can have a pay card to you. Um, and those pay cards essentially act as your direct deposit, you know, do that. And some people use them as even as like perks. Like I know I've got some coworkers who use it where they have so much go into their, uh, direct deposit. They have like a, a college fund or a, a little bit of extra money go to this for a vacation fund, go into that debit card from there. So it's just something to think about. It's helpful.
Has this already been presented to the commissioners too yet?
No.
No.
I, I have said in on, uh, two or three, um, presentations. So I said in on Paycom, uh, said in on ADP, did not said in on, was it Harris? I think it was the third one. So I, I already seen the presentation, but the other commissioners have, have not.
But we're not waiting on you guys, I mean, we're, I'm, I'm thinking we're waiting, this is in your department.
The payroll, yes.
So...
You mean the funding? The funding comes out of the commissioners.
I understand. You support all this uptake and it, we wouldn't be here today.
Right.
And we have bid all this out, right?
Yes. Yes.
I would just tell you that probably for the last three or four years, I've been pushing the August office as well as formally choosing to get an automated payroll system to get us into the twenty-first century. I personally support it. And I can't speak for the other two commissioners, but personally, I, I support it. Um, I, you know, the opinion that if it was brought to the commissioners, uh, to enter into a contract, then it would probably get supported. That, that's about all the information I can...
It's, the budgetary is gonna be huge.
A system of this nature is necessary. I, I definitely agree with that.
And the, like I was jokingly said, about the nine forty-ones, I mean, they're...
A payment.
A payment.
I like having that liability to them too. Our insurance company likes them having that liability at the top of their day.
And while at the beginning of the year, the tax rates changed. So she had to, before changing, they've done before, she got the tax rates in, people were going back.
They manually changed. They didn't even update.
She manually changed.
Couldn't even upload the tax rates. I had to manually enter them.
Does the state, does the state or federal government have to approve on the software that we...
No.
Does not?
No, we talked to state board of council. They denied.
That, uh, as long as it integrates with Paris, right? Which is always state required.
So our attraction will be a thirty, thirty-eight thousand dollars, basically.
But Harris will take it, integration from them. They write the G L code compatible with Harris to go straight to treasure.
Can we take Harris's direction?
We will. They're probably right now.
So you'll be there as a...
After payroll's run, there's a file, there's a G L file.
Six thousand dollar increase.
You download it and then you push it in there each time.
So, you said sixteen weeks to implement this thing?
Roughly. I mean, that depends on being with, for the folks, we, last time I checked, they have day jobs. People drop everything, but roughly that's about how long it takes for everything to get set up.
And you can think of an automated time solution. It actually occurs a couple of weeks before the payroll freezes. So, a lot of times it doesn't get started around the beginning of a quarter, or I would recommend the beginning of a month, so that you can...
We do that part of them.
Time for six years, for a time clock.
Well, I'll just finally go ahead. So Gail, what you're looking, what you guys are asking us to do is come up with the funds to fund this, and then it's going to commissioners?
Basically, yeah.
Is this all the options that you guys are after? Is this everything?
It's actually more than we were after for no extra cost.
The other, the other system that we looked into, which is part of Harris, um, there's some time, time clocks plus software. And all that was going to do was to gather the information, the hours and, and things like that. But then it would be, um, then, then that file would be uploaded into Harris and I would be doing the same thing that I'm doing now.
Center, separate buckets of information.
Which, yeah, which, you know, does not, you know, with this, it takes away the, the nine forty-one. I mean, I don't know, I think, you know. When I came in, started in January, I know the nine forty-one forms, all, all that information had, was not even sent in to the, to the I R S. I mean, it was, that was done manually, I mean, online. They got the money and they got the transaction, but you're also supposed to send paper.
We also think there's...
I never received any of those. We didn't give names or anything, but, you know, it kinda hurt me out. But they're not audit, they're not audit all that information. So they're not gonna take that responsibility until they know that everything is done correctly.
Monthly, you have your withholding tax.
It'll be this year.
I'll pick up the room.
Nine forty-one's reported. Ten ninety-five, sure. Ten ninety-five C's are annually. And those were horrible. And...
Thirty-eight thousand.
But she's done that. Doesn't give herself credit, but...
Right. Unless it's wrong, yeah.
It's a good thing for us, I feel like.
Unless it's like wrong, yeah.
Sorry, because it's a time clock, so I mean, we got a lot of people with all the different roomies and...
I got four closets.
I think it's on here.
Yeah, it's on, it's like a pager.
I don't know, um, how much has the sheriff been involved? Has he been to any of the...
One thing that's where, I think that's where the auditor helps, the land would have to go around to like the sheriff department, S C E R. We already know that it doesn't integrate well with S C E R. They're gonna be a bit of an exception because their twenty-four hour work schedule. Um, that was discussed during the presentation the other day. Um, but working with those elected officials to say, "Hey, because you do have different scenarios, different outlook, what kind of clock-in process is gonna be best in terms of you?" I would tell you that I definitely want one of the, uh, biometric time clocks at the county highway drive, for example. Uh, to me, it makes sense to have one to coordinate. Obviously, that's...
The county highway right now, they have paper. They have a daily punch card that they do.
So is the sheriff's department and messages for places that...
Okay. That discussion has to happen.
Those time cards aren't cheap either.
No, they're not.
And they do, they do daily. I don't...
We still use them over my place at Dr. Nuts, but I'm pretty sure we've been...
So I mean, that sheet, you know, the manager's getting the sheet from every one of her employees or guests. And then they're taking it and then they're putting it on a voucher and bringing it to you then. If someone is terminated, someone leaves, we take it, whatever their word is, they have twenty-five vacation days. They've got four P T O's, they got eighty hours of overtime. We just, okay, here you go, here's your check. And we, you know, there's no double, there's no...
Half of that time, right? There's also the...
Yeah, I mean, you know, we've read it to those situations already, so...
There's also the pro app measure. I know overtime is a necessary need for every organization. But if a, uh, team leader or supervisor has the ability to see where everybody is during the current week, I'm gonna have to ask, I'm not even gonna go overtime. I don't have to rush through cars. I can simply see Sally's further back. She has fewer hours. I'm gonna ask her to work overtime and not bother because Sally's gonna have a, a longer wrench before she reaches overtime. So there's a pro app aspect of it, too, to prevent, um, excess.
Absolutely.
We just gotta come up with some other issue.
Yeah, well, it, it, we don't get to have paperwork. I'll implement it.
Right, so you would essentially be looking at a quarter of that of this calendar year.
Yeah. Because you don't talk a treat on those, you know...
So you're, you're realizing that...
The eight six fifty-five and the...
Want to...
Yeah, if they do it, then we can get it to the Harris one and then we get it.
I think I can hear that, I don't know.
And so is this, it's better for them, but they have commissioners, but this, others. And if, if it's done before the end...
Then, then we start January first and we just... There was a question on the setup fees. You don't necessarily have to, they obviously wouldn't be liable to pay them until you're up and running. But you also have the ability, if you'd like to, for budgetary purposes, if you wanted to finance it for zero percent for a year, um, to spread it further, that eight grand out, whether it works better for budgetary purposes, we can do that. Just so...
Can you send us something with your signature on it, says you, you just offered us that?
I got my, I have him send you the signature. Geez, my boss.
That would be a better thing. I mean, I, so if we did this, you're all set up for, we would be set up for the new year, right? Would it all, would it carry over into this year, Gail? Through this year and then, so the tax, all the taxes and ten ninety, W twos would be ready?
It would start fourth quarter if we implemented it this year with A D P.
And that would...
Yeah, it would be huge for us. I mean, just like you didn't talk about the W twos. That was a fiasco for one, and then they mailed them to us and then we had to stuff each one of them to send out to the employees. Yeah. Employees have left, they don't leave a forwarding address.
Yeah, I mean, I could have paid them thirty or five hundred dollars to, to stuff them and mail them, but I just said, "Send them to me."
Yeah, you guys had to mail them to me so I could just go to, and scan it and then send it out wherever I was at.
Yeah, right. Where we don't have those, they can look it up, yeah.
Thank you very much. Your, um, eye contact information is in every single one of those folders? I hope it is. I, I miss a gypsy with some information.
Should we make a decision about this tonight? Should we do our special meeting next Thursday?
I mean, I'm open to ear, but I know we got, this is something we ought to do. There's no doubt.
Gail, what do you want? I mean, you brought it to us, but you, you want to, you want to present it by Monday?
Yeah, we can do it Monday. To the commissioners. We can add it to their...
Agenda? And then go add this also to special...
Approve it.
Someone, what, what's your stuff?
I'm sorry. You can pull out that, it's fine. It's approved. I mean, they have to...
We'll have to, I think we'll have to add all the information, right? Employee names, is that, is that the, how does all that work?
They get information on it?
Yes.
Yeah, we, um, to do, we'll download it from your current system and get a report into itself.
And manually adding one to ADP takes about three minutes. It's not, it's not a dog tax.
Oh, yeah, we have to make sure all their, their P T O time.
I don't care. It's...
And then we'd also have to set up most of the...
I mean, I don't care. I mean, it's just... To me, this is nothing to think about. I mean, it's just something down the... We'll come up with money after. We...
It's coming out to commissioners now.
Yeah.
We're not the same product.
We, I, I think this is simply our commissioners, for the autograph.
It's always...
This is in the... That's what I...
Starting...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay. We gotta come up with money.
You knew your budget, you know, that, you know, because I'm not sure I'd have to look at it, see what's been out of it last year. If there's anything left over, um, out of the contract, that forty-three thirty...
This one.
So we could, we could... She's, there's, that's a hundred dollar file on her.
How recent is this first?
And the commissioners are... There's some stuff going on, but it's definitely... There's a loud change, so you'll, from day one, you may still receive an upgrade base here.
I'm gonna, so, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna do this. We, we gotta do some.
We, we... I agree. We got people, you guys, is it, is there...
One thing we ought to do. I mean, I...
Usually it's like... He's willing to push it. He's, he's willing to carry these. I mean, I think... So...
So, question for you on our, our pay. Yeah. Because of how we operate with that. So, it's gonna take you four months to get this in. You're saying, I, I heard you, the, the initial setup fee, we have to... Would you be willing for us to get our budget done and start our payments in January so we can apply the total cost into next year's budget?
For us last year to see.
Are we gonna have to pay some this year?
Forgot to pay the last quarter.
Yeah.
Well, no, I didn't answer. Don't give me that. You, I didn't answer my... There's some things that, like, can work out. That would maybe be a bit tough. Um, but you don't have to pay all that eight range. Right, so you could, we could finance that at zero percent for the whole year from the time you get it applied, so that most of it was in...
I don't think we're applying.
Uh... So, what was your other amount for the area now? So the, the way that the, and so the way that our billing would work, I know you recognize, is you'd see the first at the end, during the first, of course, the first month, you'd see the, the payroll forms. The following month, it looks back and says your active number of employees per H R and time, so that... The following month, it rolls back and says your active number of employees, each hour, in time, so that would refer in November, in December, October, the number, so you have two of the monthly payments, and then by three months, we can work it out, we can, you're pushing, we can work it out, it lasts ninety-five hundred.
Yeah, I'm just doing the math in my head, so, did you guys catch that?
No.
The total for us for this year would be ninety-five hundred.
Ninety-five hundred would be our total.
That'll be our total.
And if, and if we paid the, if we paid the eight thousand dollars, it would be eighteen thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars.
What, what are we?
We're not, I make a motion that we get it going.
I'm just thinking that, the, the funds that we already paid for Harris and stuff, I think there's probably enough money in there. It's starting.
So, I think, I think that makes sense, that's a great idea.
It's already in their budget.
Is that, is there a certain line on that?
Forty-three thirteen.
Forty-three thirteen?
When this comes due, what's you gonna do, a disapprobation?
It's already in.
Well, it's already in there.
It's already. It's the budget of the auditor. Well, this should all be paid annually, this would all be paid as first of the year.
And so we're, we're, we're getting ready to make decisions.
So that's, that's the category we've paid for Harris and things like that already, I think we should do it there.
Okay, so.
I think we can check it, I guess tomorrow and see what you're saying, that's a hundred thousand dollar line item, I can't imagine it's.
Yeah.
We're in early days.
Right, you there? Yeah.
I made a motion that we approved this to move to, what's it called, ADP.
ADP. I'm gonna mess this motion up, I just wanna let you all know, so.
So Lisa's, your, your motion is.
Just to get it going, yes, it's, it's to, yes, to, uh, I make a motion that we move our payroll to the ADP program.
Okay, that's Lisa's motion, is there any more discussion or anything, or do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mike, you second? Okay, so motion on the floor is move our payroll system all that to ADP, Lisa made it, Mike second, all in favor, raise your hands. Unamis, walk on board, guys. Don't let stand.
Clearly, on behalf of our employees, thank you, this is a benefit to every person who works for us, thank you, this is gonna be monumental for them, thank you.
And we would, uh, yeah, we talk about the service, we view it as partnership transaction, uh, for this, and so I, I mentioned the dedicated account manager, uh, that we have, but, um, I, with my colleagues, I can visit proactively at least once a year, maybe twice a year, because the county's gonna change, the county's gonna make strategic decisions to go in different directions, and we can't do a good job making sure that the service always gets you like a glove, we don't want to rear ass, you know, and so we try to stay in time.
I think Mike approved it.
I, I, I bring the balls, that's why I bring my balls.
Thank you all.
All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, and, and we'll also get this done here real quick, the Nurse Managed Clinic Transfer Fund, I, I don't think there's any kind of appropriation to this, correct? I, I guess all we gotta do is vote on that and approve.
Yeah, it's just a transfer of funds, there's no appropriation, no more money is being asked, or it's just changing.
Yeah, it's just, it's moving money, right? Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to approve it, I'll second.
Okay, Andy made a motion to, uh, go ahead and approve this movement of money for the, uh, Nurse Managed Clinic, Todd, you second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, here are no further discussion, all in favor, say aye, raise your hands, there we go, that's done, okay.
Sorry.
That was done, next thing, do we need to sign this right now, Gail?
At least have you signed it, at least. Give you some clarity there.
Okay. Lisa also, okay, I'll go ahead and we send those to her, I need a signature on that, okay, park board appointments, we have two here, we got them in front of us, this is to finish this term this year, I believe?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we got, uh, Bonnie Bauer and the Georgia writer.
Um, I am going to make a motion that we approve Bonnie Bauer, and I'll tell you why, I found out afterwards that, um, Joey is currently the, uh, trustee and patriot, and you're not allowed to be a county official of any kind to be on the park board, I did not know about that rule when I talked with them earlier in the week, but I found out today that there is a rule against that for the park board, so Bonnie's, uh, not a county official of any kind, so she is eligible to serve on the board, and it's just for the remaining of this year, the remaining of the, uh, charities, and then it'll be.
He's fine, I'll second him.
Okay, so, Lisa, you made a motion to, to nominate Bonnie Bauer for the Switzerland County, uh, that, that, that board appointment, uh, Andy, you second?
Not because I'm in a hurry, if you know, if you don't know Bonnie, you should, she's a great lady.
We had two great candidates, we, we could mess up, you know, we had two good candidates, nothing, like you said, what Lisa was saying, so, all in favor of that motion, uh, pointing Bonnie to the, uh, park board? Aye. Okay, motion passes, you did, I'm sorry, guys.
You're fine, I'm rushing it, partially on me.
Well, I mean, it's, this, you know, we did okay, uh, let's get through our board appointments, our board reports real quick.
I don't have any.
You got nothing?
We, uh, we meet next month.
We meet next month, this is all, okay?
Yeah, I don't have anything for EMA, the one thing I will say is that there's a, uh, hunger walk in Switzerland County for our, um, food pantry, it's, uh, you log on the line at, uh, www.cincinnati-hungerwalk.org, and then you have to join a team, it's called the Taste of the Rain, Taste the Rainbow of Switzerland County Food Pantry. So anybody who logged on to do the bike walk and DVD on, uh, Memorial Day, um, it starts at nine-thirty in the morning down at the old park. You can go on, log on and not walk, and just donate the money to twenty bucks or twenty-five bucks to go to the food pantry or whatever, or you can come down that day and pay that day, and Debbie Turner is, uh, spearheading that walk through the, it's the, uh, what do they call that, the homemaker's club, that's doing it for the food pantry, that's it.
Okay, me, we, uh, we had no, uh, arts association meeting, but I did get a chance to watch, uh, Jeff Craig cut up some cars this past Sunday up there, the extradition, or however you want to pronounce that. Yes, they, they had a train up there, and then Morville actually has one out there, I think, this Saturday, if I'm not mistaken, at their location, uh, though I saw it on Switzerland County government site, so, um, that's interesting watching what they do, so, uh, and then also, we all got that email about the library, too, let's get back to this, a ribbon cutting, so just a reminder on that, that's in this month, I think it's a Saturday morning at eleven-thirty, like, double check your emails, please, you know, so. All right.
We didn't meet this week, or this month, but I'm gonna look into it, make sure the building's not gonna be blue.
Okay.
Blue's driving me nuts.
It's our, uh, it's our glass rock on the side.
Is that what it is?
The pink stuff.
Oh, I'll talk about the blue stuff.
Yeah, the blue stuff, they stop.
Wear me out, I just need him to finish it, or? Take it off.
Okay, you guys are, you guys are cool, okay, uh, there's no announcements on the bank, the audience has left us, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Please.
Please, Andy made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mike, Mike, you second, all in favor? All right, meeting adjourned, remember, we got a special meeting. Remember, we got a special meeting this Thursday.
Thank you.